Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Eddie.
Thank you.
Okay, now it is Eddie's turn, so the forensic audit report?
So, the period that was audited was July 1, 2014 to December 31, 2015. And we just completed that last month. So, it was in progress there for about a year and three months. It covers, I already went over that, but it was performed by Aid Bailey, a regional Independence EPA firm, mostly off-site work with us providing emails and documentation electronically. We estimate that we spent in finance about 407 hours trying to complete the project, and they noted that in their report, too. Just to go over kind of what a forensic audit typically would be compared to the normal audit we get every year, the forensic audit is more focused on looking for things like theft, fraud, embezzlement, misappropriation, you know, missing money, things being done wrong, as opposed to our typical audit where they're coming in. They do check for that, but they're also trying to say the numbers are accurate and then we're reporting according to standards. So, the auditor comes in with a different viewpoint, and they approach you differently when you're doing a forensic audit. So, it's 100% transaction testing compared to sample testing done in our normal annual audit. In this case, it was 55.3 million in payroll that they reviewed and 15,000 payroll checks approximately. And in those payroll checks, we estimate that included about 5,600 timesheets that were processed over that time. So, their results, kind of a high-level summary of that is there was no fraud, there wasn't embezzlement, there wasn't theft, they didn't find these kind of big-ticket scary items that you may fear coming out of a forensic audit. They did say there were 29 possible under/overpayments identified. We'll talk about, you know, that's my phrasing there, "possible." They identified 14 or under/overpayments which our system corrected, but it corrected it outside of the period which they audited. So, these under/overpayments averaged about, on those 14, about $2 to $3. And they were items where, you know, the first two paychecks of the year were off a small amount, and we caught that. We made the correction in the system, and then that correction got spread through the rest of the year, and they didn't audit the rest of the year, so they had no way to say that wasn't an under/overpayment, and they included it. So, the total transactions they identified there that they said maybe an under/overpayment is 43, with a total of 7,800 out of the 55 million. They did note that they had our full cooperation, our assistance in completing their audit. So, to do a little bit of analysis over those 43 transactions, again, 14 of them were the system spread issues, and I've separated this between, you know, what I would agree is an error and what I'm saying is something else. One of those was, one of the payments which they identified was, it was correct at the time we processed the payment, but the employee quit. So, we were, we had to go back and correct that payment, so, I mean, there was nothing we could do. We had one where the employee was double-paid, that was our largest error they identified. That was due to a human error in data processing, data entry. We had a system error in our subsystem carrying over the number of hours a substitute worked incorrectly. Four more human payroll, non-timesheet, I've separated these between timesheet and non-timesheet errors, this is data entry error, we had four of those human errors. We had five issues where, you know, out of all the support, they looked at contracts, they looked at timesheets, they looked at coaching agreements, and we couldn't provide them those documents five times. And they included all of those as errors, regardless of whether or not they felt the payment was inappropriate. Then they had 11 items identified where they say we either under/overpaid or incorrectly paid a timesheet. And then we had six, we had one person where the incorrect pay rate was set up for that employee, and it paid him wrong six times. So, that was, that one error caused six more. So, to analyze that a little bit farther, they, you know, they note this rate in their report of our accuracy percentage at 99.72%, that's using the full 43. I think that's maybe a little unfair. If you do that calculation just based on the number of dollars, 7,800 out of the 55 million, you get 99.986%. If you factor out those 14 spread issue errors, you get 99.81. So, a high number in every case. If you look at the 7,000, those are made up of three employees, sorry, 7,200 of that 7,800 of under/overpayments is made up of three employees and four transactions. And that, one of the transactions is that double-payment we talked about, and then we, the other three are documentation not being provided issues. So, two of those, our payroll department and I are very confident, our timesheets, we had. And this is the fourth time the same set of payroll has been audited, and this employee has been discussing this payroll, these timesheets, so... I don't think that's, you know, those are actually incorrect payments, I think we just can't produce those documents. So, if you look at the other errors outside of these four transactions, the remaining errors are averaging $14 per error, and our overall average is 1.28. Errors that we're, that I'm agreeing on are as errors across that period. And, you know, to kind of talk about that period, and I think I noted this somewhere else, is this was the time we were going through our conversion in the system, so, you know, the months leading up to that conversion, we were doing nothing but setting up that new system, and then the months afterwards, trying to learn how to actually use the new system. So, I'm just saying, that's a very difficult time for our department, so I think that's a fairly good result. I think, you know, and judging from my background as an auditor, I think this is a good result. I don't think this is a perfect result, I don't think this is, you know, as I put up there, our goal is 100% accuracy. I think it's a, it is a big problem for the relationship between a district and employee when their paycheck is wrong, and we want that to be 100% accurate, and that is what we're striving for. But I do think this is a good result. So, to analyze it a little bit farther, when we looked at the 23 items which we noted as, I think I have that up there, worded a little bit wrong, but 23 of those items which we were saying are agreed-upon errors, 16 of them relate to timesheets and all the manual work we have to do for timesheets. There's a, you know, it being such a manual process, there's really a lot of room for error. So, you know, what we're proposing here from this analysis would be that we look at that time clock system implementation again. So, our next steps and where we've gone from since receiving the report is we've looked at, you know, underpayments have to be made, and the overpayments, correcting the overpayments to the extent we can, and then internal controls that we can change. One of them that we've put in place, again, this is, you know, looking back several years, actually, so one of them that we've put in place since this time is a process we call payroll balancing. So, what you would do is you would take this month's payroll, and you line it up next to the prior month's payroll, and you say, "What changed?" And then you say, "Can I explain, do I have the paperwork to explain why one particular paycheck for that employee might be up compared to the month prior?" The problem with that is when you have an average of about, you know, 400 timesheets in any given month, that is a huge factor in trying to do that reconciliation, so we found that reconciliation to be extremely time-consuming, and we're working on ways to do that efficiently. We looked at our, the floor layout of payroll, and what we, what we saw, and in discussions with payroll, is that one of the payroll specialists was basically functioning as the receptionist within the HR finance area. So, you're doing extremely detailed work, and you have people coming in constantly asking you just, you know, "Is this person here?" and whatever questions, and we thought that's probably not appropriate for that person, and we ended up, you know, enclosing them so that they're not getting those distractions daily. And then we're going to continue to work towards the time clock solution and bring something forward to the board again. So, are there, are there any questions I can answer?
I got one question, Mr. George. Can you go back to your first slide, please? It covers July 1, 2014 to December 31, 2015, that's over three years ago, not more. So, if it's 43 mistakes payroll, how many mistakes do we have today if we just now get in this audit? So, if it's three years ago, we talking about 126, give or take, today?
No, yeah, as I was, you know, kind of talking about there at the end of that report, I think we have put in procedures since the time this audit took place, and I would dispute their number of 43 errors, given that 14 of those were spread pay issues. And we have looked at other, you know, other ways that we can correct or improve, and one of them being, as I said, trying to eliminate some of the distractions that we're getting. As one of our payroll specialists is functioning as basically a receptionist, and I do think that, looking forward, what we can do to even improve further is to say, you know, what can we do with the large number of manual entries on timesheets, because that's, that's causing the biggest number of errors. And, you know, without a solution like that, I, I am going to continue, you know, we're human, and we do make errors, and I think you're going to see in any business and any government you go into and you look at payroll, they all have, they all have some error rate.
Because I work for the Colorado Department of Rabinho, and we don't believe in error rate. When you get your taxes back, you don't want no error, you want your amount back.
Sure.
So, I don't believe in errors. I believe in 100% throughout this district, so I don't believe in no excuses.
And I agree with you.
And I think as a board, and with Mr. Milner just coming on task, I think we all should come together as a board with the superintendent and see if we can sit down before, not too long, as soon as possible, Mr. Chair, and see how we can make sure this is at 100% because if it's three years old, you giving us an audit over three years old, and you still saying the young lady or young man is still working as a receptionist, they still, if I am mistaken, still making errors. So, the errors is still occurring as we speak, the payroll errors, I assume. So, I believe we need to sit down and think about what we doing to take this to the 21st century, this district, because 97, 95%, that's unacceptable, period.
I'm sorry, I'm going to correct you, that's, that's 99.8.
Well, I still like 100%.
I do, too.
We agree, I mean, that's why we put up there, 100% is our goal. We did make errors, and again, this was three years ago. We're implementing things to make it more electronic, you know, some of those timesheet errors could be on who's filling out the timesheet, could be incorrect, or it could be, you know, on payroll's portion of it. We remain that 100% accuracy is our goal, and we believe that we will get there by implementing some of these changes, and again, that's our goal, and we do think we'll get there. Being $55 million in payroll and being 99.9% accurate, I think is good, but again, 100% is what we're aiming for, and that's our goal, and that's what we plan on being that. So, you know, pretty soon, you know, maybe next year, we can have an audit like this, and we can show 100% accuracy, but that's our goal, and that's what we're going to continue to aim for.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Are you done, Eddie? Did you have any questions, Dr. Hyde?
No, I don't.
Ms. Connie?
No.
Thank you very much.
That's the presentations, Board President.
Thank you. Now, we're going to move on to audience comments. But before we get to audience comments, I am going to read BEDH, because I have a stack of comments here that are going to take longer than, if we go three minutes each, they're going to take quite a while. So, I am going to read Public Participation at Board Meetings Policy, BEDH. State the name in school. A maximum of three minutes per speaker will be allotted to present comments, concerns, and suggestions. No seating at time between speakers will be permitted. The total amount of audience participation at any board meeting will be limited to 30 minutes. The board president may use discretion in time allocation in extraordinary circumstances. All statements shall be kept within the realm of district concerns. No individual or personal problems shall be presented. Complaints involving the reputation of any person connected with the district will not be heard by the board while sitting in public session. Public comment time is made available to the public for, to address issues, not personalities. Personal attacks will not be permitted. The school district also has confidence in its professional staff and desires to support their actions in order that they may be free from unnecessary, spiteful, or destructive criticism and complaint. Any complaint about school personnel shall be referred back through proper administrative channels or in accordance with Board of Education policy KE before it is presented to the board for consideration or action. Constructive criticism motivated by a sincere desire to improve the quality of the educational program or to equip the schools to do their tasks more effectively is welcomed by the Board of Education. All public statements shall be constructive or helpful to the operation of the school system. Constructive criticism made for the improvement of district goals or for better education for children. Written statements or comments are encouraged for submission. The copies will be provided by district staff to each board member for review. The statements can be used for review and basis for placement on the agenda at the succeeding meeting of the board after all pertinent information has been gathered. The president may recognize a board member or superintendent to respond to questions, comments, or make a statement to clarify a district position. There will be no audience response allowed after the board member or superintendent has responded. Members of the public will not be recognized by the president during board meetings except as noted in this policy. Members of the public wishing to make formal presentations before the board should make arrangements in advance with the superintendent so that such presentations, when appropriate, may be scheduled on the agenda. I know that I have been in violation of this policy a lot since I've been the president, and I keep getting reprimanded from the board that we do need to continue on with board business, and we do need to hear from everybody. But we do have time limits, so I'm going to ask you for your comments to please be, if at all possible, the three-minute time period, and I will stop you at three minutes. And not being disrespectful, I'm just asking you that there are a lot of people that wish to speak, and I do, and I will ask you again to please not have personal attacks against people. We understand that there's a lot of animosity within the district, we understand that, we get that. We're looking for ways to fix this stuff. We're trying, we're trying to hear all of the issues, we're trying to put everything together, we're trying to make sure that we're moving forward as a school district because our kids deserve it. Our kids deserve to hear from you, as we do, we deserve to hear from you, but, but our kids deserve better than we've been having in the last couple of meetings. It's all been pretty negative, and, and I understand it, I get it. I'm not reprimanding anybody, I'm not asking you not to bring those concerns to us, I'm not, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying that there are a lot of positive things happening in the school district that we don't ever hear about. So, with that, let's move on to audience comments. I'm going to call Maria Rodriguez. And your clock won't start until after you give your name, okay?
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Maria Rodriguez. Tengo...
Good afternoon, my name is Maria Rodriguez.
Tengo cuatro niños, dos en Mónaco y dos en high school.
I have four kids, two in Mónaco and two in high school.
Cuando, me gustaría felicitar a una persona. Cuando esta persona empezó como director en Lester Arnold y luego en Adams City High School, en su momento hizo su trabajo, y ahora como jefe de operaciones, me gustaría felicitarlo por su trabajo en las áreas verdes y campos de nuestras escuelas.
And I would like to congratulate a person that when he was principal at Lester Arnold, and then he became principal, he was at ACHS during his time, during his work as chief of operations, he was able to improve on the green areas and, and fields of our schools.
Y parecería ilógico lo que les voy a pedir, pero me gustaría que a ver si pudieran subirle el 50% de su sueldo. Suena ilógico, pero saquen sus propias conclusiones.
And this might sound illogical what I'm going to ask, but I would love him to have 50% more of his salary. I know this sounds illogical, but you draw your own conclusions, why?
Otro punto que me gustaría tratar con ustedes, no sé si recuerden, el caso de mi hija donde se le amenazó de muerte el 9 de febrero de este año.
And I would like to raise another point. I don't know if you remember that my daughter was threatened, had a death threat on 9th February of this year.
Aún no tuve ninguna resolución porque el sistema de cámaras no funcionaba o no estaba enfocado en el área de donde recibió la llamada.
And I haven't received any resolution to this because the camera system either did not work or was not focused on the area where she was.
Dentro de la escuela en horas de clases.
And inside of a school during school hours.
Yo pienso que en el momento que ustedes decidieron escoger la administración de Adams City High School, ellos debieron revisar todos los pormenores de las instalaciones.
I think that when you were able to get the new person for ACHS, they should have checked all the minor details on the installation of the school.
Y han pasado aproximadamente tres meses, y me gustaría saber si ya arreglaron las cámaras, y también que algunos niños cuando tienen este tipo de problemas reciban algún tipo de terapia emocional, porque mi hija no lo recibió, no recibió nada hasta después de un mes.
And I would like to know if those cameras were fixed, and also would like to know if those, if the kids that are affected by that kind of threats can receive emotional help because my daughter never received anything similar.
Eso es todo, muchas gracias.
Thank you. That is it, thank you. Amanda Gonzalez?
Hi, my name is Amanda Gonzalez. Tonight, I'm wearing all the various hats that I wear as a parent, a community member, former Adams 14 teacher, and a current administrator at a KIP school. Mr. Thomas, you made a comment during your study session about taking care of our house, and tonight I've heard a lot of comments from you that push towards taking care of our house, and I thank you for that. Starting with my parent and my community hat on. Board of Education Superintendent Abrego, I'm saddened that we have to continue to ask you to do the right thing for our children. Why is this even a thing? Why do we as parents have to beg you to hire qualified people to lead our schools? Why do we have to beg you to vote no on a non-renewal for certain administrators who have destroyed school culture and who have pushed highly qualified teachers away from teaching our students in high school? You were all at graduation when a couple of student speeches mentioned that this has been the worst year yet at the high school. Parents have been telling you this all year long. I'm unsure at what part we're not being clear on. Putting my educator hat on. As an educator coming from a traditional public school setting, I admit that I was apprehensive to make the move to charter schools based on the current charter options in our city and also based on the politics surrounding charter schools nationwide. Someone said during your study session that charter schools are breathing down our necks. Charter schools are here. I serve as the assistant principal at KIP Northeast Denver Middle School, which educates students in grades five through eight in far northeast Denver. I oversee special education, English language development, gifted education, and science. Some would believe that CDE has conspired with Adams 14 School Board to run this district into the ground so as to open the doors to charters in the district, while others are so devastated at your lack of leadership that charter schools are our only options. I was afraid of making the move to charter. I was, and I still am, afraid of losing friends in this district that are anti-charter. But since you refuse to take my kids' future serious, I say the following with my entire heart. Given the current charters in our city, I was jaded and I lived in fear of charter schools. KIP showed me that my fears were completely unjustified. At KIP, I've joined a community of hard-working educators that are passionate about social justice and working with communities to develop schools that meet their needs while holding high expectations for academic success. We proudly serve students with disabilities, students who are bilingual, gifted students, and we always incorporate systems of culturally relevant pedagogy into every content while supporting teachers in developing capacity and growing as professionals. I've grown as an educational leader, and I've witnessed my students grow as passionate, lifelong learners. That said, strong schools are possible, listening to community need is possible, and I'm hoping you'll direct your votes to our community need. Thank you.
Thank you. Maria C.
Board President, may I just reemphasize that we are not supposed to use names when they're making comments? Am I correct?
Yes, yes. If I didn't state that, please refrain from using names.
Hola, mi nombre es María Centeno, y estoy aquí esta noche para contarles mi experiencia como padre en Adams 14. Mis hijos solían ir a la escuela en Denver, y nos encantó nuestra escuela ahí. Me mudé a Thornton, y desde que comenzamos a enviar a nuestros hijos a la escuela en Adams 14, me sentí preocupada de que no estén recibiendo una buena educación. Asistí a una reunión de casa con otras familias que están teniendo experiencias similares. Una de las reuniones a las que asistí fue organizada por Marta, y les dijo a las familias que había, que había mudado a su hijo de las escuelas a una escuela KIP. Hace seis años, y que estaba mucho más contenta con la educación que recibe su hijo. Entonces decidimos reunirnos con Kimberly, el director de todas las escuelas KIP en Colorado. Ella vino a nuestro vecindario para responder preguntas sobre la programación de KIP. Algo que desearía que ocurriera aquí en Adams 14. Kimberly nos dijo que en KIP las escuelas apoyan a los estudiantes a través de la universidad con un consejero de alumnos hasta seis años después de la secundaria. Y 80% de los graduados de uno de sus campus de las escuelas secundarias se gradúan con el sello de alfabetización bilingüe. Si bien esto es genial, una de las cosas que más me llamó la atención fue que realmente nos preguntó qué queremos en nuestra escuela, en lugar de solo decirnos cómo iba a ser. Luego fui a hacer un recorrido por KIP en Green Valley Ranch, y me sentí muy feliz de ver que todos los estudiantes de la escuela estaban trabajando juntos. En mi escuela no celebran nuestra cultura. En KIP todos los estudiantes estaban todos juntos, y lo más importante, todos parecían divertirse. Los niños trabajaban juntos y usaban tecnología. Tenían más de un maestro en el aula que ayudaba a los alumnos con su trabajo para que cada alumno recibiera de los adultos la atención que necesita. Como padre, siento que final... Como padre siento que finalmente estoy encontrando la forma de recuperar mi voz solicitando que el distrito considere darles a las familias más opciones como un KIP aquí en Adams 14. Todos saben que tenemos que mejorar porque no podemos traer, porque no podemos traer escuelas que están haciendo cosas realmente increíbles.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm gonna translate. Excuse me. Members of the Board of Education, my name is María Centero and I am here tonight to tell you about my experience as a parent in Adams 14. My children used to go to school in Denver and we loved our school there. I moved to Thornton and since we started sending our kids to school in Adams 14, I have felt concerned that they are not getting a good education. I cannot drive them to Denver every day, but if I could, I would because I am not satisfied with my options in Adams 14. I feel discriminated against often in Adams 14 and do not feel like I have a say when I am upset about the experiences my children are having. As a parent, that is the worst feeling in the world. I attended a house meeting with other families who are having similar experiences. As a parent so far in Adams 14, I have felt powerless and I am frustrated. One of the meetings that I attended was hosted by Martha and she told families that she moved her son from the schools here to a KIP school six years ago and that she was much happier with the education her son is receiving. We then decided to meet with Kimberly, the director of all KIP schools in Colorado. She came to our neighborhood to answer questions about KIP's programming, something that I wish could happen here in Adams 14. Kimberly told us that at KIP, the school supports students through college with an alumni counselor for up to six years after high school and 80% of the graduates from one of their high school campuses graduate with a seal of bilinguism. While this is all great, one of the things that stood out to me most was that she actually asked us what we wanted in our schools instead of just telling us how it was going to be. I then went to take a tour of KIP in Green Valley Ranch and I felt so happy to see that all the students in the school were working together. At my school, I feel like they separate the Spanish-speaking students from the English-speaking students, which does not celebrate culture. At KIP, all of the students were all together and most importantly, they all looked like they were having fun. Kids were working together and using technology. They had more than one teacher in the classroom helping students with their work so that every student was getting the attention that they needed from the adults. As a parent, I feel like I am finally finding a way to get my voice back by saying that I am not satisfied with our current options and asking that the district consider giving families more options like a KIP here in Adams 14. You all know that we need to improve. Why can't we bring in schools that are doing really amazing things?
Thank you. Martha Gonzalez.
Hi, my name is Martha Gonzalez and I'm gonna try my English. It's not so well, but I'm going to save some time. Okay, my name is Martha Gonzalez. I am so proud KIP parent. I live here in Adams 14 and I along with 100 other families from our neighborhood. I left my school that my son was going to because, because my son was in a special education class where he was not challenged. Instead of challenging my son, they put him in a class with the students not spend their day waiting for the day end and not learning. I know my son deserves something better. And one day I go into a meeting and I'm discovered, discovered that KIP school in one movie, I don't know if you see that, Waiting for Superman. And I'm back to my home and I go to my computer and I investigate about the schools here. And the next day I'm going there and they accept my son. After eight years he stayed in a school just with special kids, he have a big, big gap he can close because he never learned something. But this school give it to him the opportunity to learn and to be independent and now he's a very proud kid. He get up every morning at 5:00 a.m. because we drive, well, I drive more than three hours every day to keep him to Green Valley Ranch. And he's so happy because they find that way to learn, he need to learn and that way he is happy and feel comfort with another students like a regular kid. So I talk to the CEO, CEO of the KIP and I'm talk to her about this community need one KIP school here because all the kids need the opportunity to learn like that. I can feel your passion for the education. I can hear over here you'll find different ways to learn, how can help our kids. And I really want invite you to get a tour on the old school and see how is the education there, how different it is. And please give it to us opportunity or the opportunity to our kids to get this school here in our district. And again, I am, I live here in Adams 14 and I get three house meetings in my neighborhood with our families and I found more than 100 people. I surprising because I thought just me traveled so far to get my kid to different school far away, but that most of these families do the same thing than me. Don't come to this district, just find something very far away. So please give it to us the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Sylvia De La Cruz. Is Sylvia in the other room? She left. Maribel Pasillas.
Buenas tardes a todos. Mi nombre es Maribel Pasillas y soy una activista y madre de familia en Adams 14. Estoy aquí hoy para decirles que he estado frustrada con mis escuelas por mucho tiempo y estoy lista para un cambio. Este fin de semana hubo un grupo, un grupo de miembros de la comunidad se reunieron para exigir que el distrito sea más receptivo y con los padres, maestros y estudiantes a medida que solicitamos los componentes básicos de nuestra educación de calidad. Me preocupa el futuro de mi hijo en Adams 14. A principios de este mes aprendimos que ni siquiera uno de cada diez estudiantes irá a la universidad en Adams 14. No nos sorprende porque nuestra única opción de escuela preparatoria, Adams City High School, ni siquiera tuvo un consejero eficaz durante todo el año. Como parte de mi trabajo pensando en cómo podemos mejorar nuestras escuelas para nuestros estudiantes, he estado aprendiendo más sobre otras escuelas de las que he oído que están haciendo cosas realmente buenas para los estudiantes y las familias. Y me enteré de que KIP Colorado era otra opción que podíamos invitar a nuestra comunidad. Hice un recorrido por KIP Colorado y de inmediato sentí una sensación de alivio como un padre que ha estado en pánico durante mucho tiempo. Vi a maestros que celebraban las culturas de sus alumnos y hablaban español con ellos. Vi a estudiantes leyendo, apoyando a los maestros y teniendo en cuenta las altas expectativas. Los niños que van a KIP también reciben apoyo durante toda la universidad durante seis años después de graduarse de la escuela secundaria y nueve de cada diez ingresan a la universidad. Pensamos que esto podría pasar aquí también. Esta junta podría trabajar en conjunto e ir y aprender sobre otras escuelas que están preparando a los niños para una vida de, llena de oportunidades. Me siento llena de esperanza después de ver esta escuela y espero que la junta escolar se encargue de venir y ver de qué esperanza estoy hablando.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Maribel Pasillas and I am an activist and parent in Adams 14. I am here today to tell you that I have been frustrated with my schools for too long and I am ready for a change. This weekend, a group of community members came together to demand that the district be more responsive to parents, teachers and students as we ask for the basic components of a quality education. I am concerned about my child's future in Adams 14. Earlier this month, we learned that not even one out of every 10 students will go to college in Adams 14. We are not surprised by this because our only high school option, Adam City High School, hasn't even had an effective counselor for most of the year. As a part of my work, thinking about how we can improve our schools for our students, I have been learning more about other schools that I have heard are doing really good things for families and students. I met Marta at a house meeting and learned that KIP Colorado was another option that we could invite into our community. I took a tour of KIP Colorado and I immediately felt a sense of relief as a parent who has felt panicked for a long time. I saw teachers celebrating their students' cultures and speaking Spanish with them. I saw students reading, being supported by teachers and being held to high expectations. I saw the kind of efforts that the school was taking to bring parents into the school. They have a no-cross grocery program where parents can come into the school and pick up free organic groceries. The school even had a room for parents to come use the computers with a place the younger kids could play while moms use the computers. We saw a pre-K class where they were learning their letters by dancing. The teachers were teaching the letters in both Spanish and English and when we were watching, they were pretending to swim because they were learning the letter P for pesca and swimming like fish. I leave today feeling optimistic and optimistic for the first time in a long time because I have seen a school that can do great things for children like mine. What if we had more schools like this here in Adams 14? I feel hopeful after seeing that school and I hope that the school board takes it upon themselves to come and see what hope I am talking about.
Thank you. Amanda Burns. Yes. Thanks. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Esteemed members of the Board and Superintendent Abrego.
Did I get your speech?
Yes.
Do you want it back?
No, I have.
Oh, okay.
I gave that to you for later reference.
Okay.
My name is Amanda Burns and I teach at 5th grade at Monaco Elementary. I appear before you tonight to discuss a concern I share with many colleagues regarding the fate of donations from Donors Choose. Before I begin, I'd like to say that your, our tech team and HR have been amazingly helpful and responsive. Donors Choose is a fundraising website specifically for teachers to raise money to buy resources for the classroom. In the spring of 2016, my family and friends donated $1,558.52 so that I could purchase six Chromebooks for use with my students. Donations were provided exclusively by my family and friends, one of whom donated over $700 when the project was half-funded. When reading the Adams 14 Board Policy, which I've enclosed, and the Donors Choose Policy, also enclosed, I see room for discussion about this particular situation. The Board Policy refers to donations to schools, not individual teachers. At no point are donations to teachers referenced. The Donors Choose Policy states that donated materials should remain at the teacher's original school if a teacher leaves after receiving the materials unless both of these criteria are met. The teacher will continue to teach in a public school and in a position that meets our eligibility criteria which are attached. The principal gives consent for the teacher to take funded materials to use in his or her new classroom. Both of these criteria are met in my case. Donors Choose acknowledges that specific schools and districts have their own policies. However, as previously stated, our district policy refers to donations to schools, not teachers or classrooms. If the district chooses to keep the laptops, then I must insist that the district policy be updated with more specificity. This will permit a more concrete decision-making process which will take away the need for debate on case-by-case decisions based on interpretation. The policy has not been updated since 2011. Donors Choose is a popular fundraising website that helps us to provide valuable resources at no cost to the district, to our students. Most of these projects are funded by the closest, those closest to us who anticipate that we will continue to be the stewards of these resources. As there is a lack of clarity in these policies, I request that the board honor my request to continue to be the steward of these Chromebooks. And if that's not something that we can discuss right now, I still think that in referring to the Board Policy, which is on the very first page, donations to schools. Again, I think if you will look through the packet, you'll see the Donors Choose Policy as well. You will see emails between me and tech and HR, which again are all very helpful, but I think it's obvious that there's room for debate in that the policy is not explicit. Additionally attached is my, and I'm just one teacher, but this has been an issue across the district that we're just trying to get clarity on. You will see the actual project request so that you can read the terminology of that. Additionally, the comments attached and I'm happy to explain who every one of those donations are. I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Elizabeth Silva Diaz.
Hi, I have a PowerPoint of student work I wanna show. Should I just start?
If you want. Are you finding it, Monica?
Yeah, I just can't have two things on the screen.
Oh, okay.
Good evening, members of the Board. My name is Elizabeth Silva Diaz and I am at the Bueno Center at Zou Boulder. For the last three years, I've had the privilege of working with the bilingual teachers and students in Adams 14. One of the highlights of my work has been seeing the students develop their literacy skills in both Spanish and English. Today, I'm gonna share with you the work of the bilingual students and teachers at Monaco. During the last literacy unit, the students worked on different writing pieces that described their identities and in particular, how they feel about being bilingual and learning in a bilingual classroom. The first graders wrote illustrated and recorded ebooks. The second graders wrote poems and the third graders wrote, oh, sorry. Set up better. Wrote opinion pieces. Tonight, I wanna highlight the voices of the students and share with our community how the students feel about being bilingual. First is Emilio. I want, I'm bilingual. I wanna be bilingual because my dad was born in Mexico and he speaks Spanish. My mom learned English here. I have the right to be, to speak two languages. The reason I wanna be bilingual, if you go to the next slide. The reason I wanna, I want to speak two languages is because when I was little, I only spoke Spanish. I want to learn English as well as I know Spanish. The next slide. When I'm big, I wanna be a soccer player. It helps to be bilingual because I can tell my teammate what the referee said. These are all actually have audio, but I couldn't figure out the technology for that to show here. Next is Karime. Ser bilingüe. Por Karime, me siento orgullosa de ser bilingüe. Ayudo a mi mamá a traducir, le puedo leer a mi hermanita porque no sabe cómo leer en inglés ni español. Puedo entender los dos idiomas. Ser bilingüe es como si ando flotando en dos nubes llenas de palabras. Ser bilingüe es asombroso. And last but not least is Alexander. Learning in a bilingual classroom is special. There are only three other classes that speak English and Spanish at our school. I could speak both languages. I speak Spanish with my mom and dad. I speak English to my aunt. I could do some of the tests in Spanish. I like to do reading tests in Spanish because I can understand more. In the future, I wanna be a dentist and speaking in English and Spanish will help me. I can, I can help a patient who only speaks Spanish. Pausing the bilingual program after 3rd grade would significantly impact the educational experiences of these students who just express how much being bilingual means to them and supports their academic development as well as strengthens ties to their communities. Research highlights the cognitive and academic benefits of being bilingualism and bilinguism and emphasizes the need for schools to be involved in the development of bilinguism. Maintaining the students' bilinguism will be more challenging if after 3rd grade the students take a pause. Findings from the Literacy Squared Project show that students in the bilingual classroom are performing comparably in English to similar peers in monolingual English classrooms while at the same time developing literacy skills in Spanish. Building a strong bilinguistic program takes time and has many challenges. However, Adams 14 does have the capacity and the curriculum to expand bilinguism to 4th grade and beyond. The teachers, parents and community are ready to make it happen. The Board has a decision-making power to ensure that students like Emilio Karime and Alex continue their bilinguistic development. I urge the Board to consider the voices of these students about the importance of being bilingual and work towards continuing to develop a pathway for bilinguism from K to 12. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, Board members. My name is Jodi Slavik, and I have worked with your biliteracy teachers for the past three years through my work on Literacy Squared. You've seen many of us stand up here week after week fighting to protect bilingual programming in Adams 14. Yet, we still do not feel like anything is being done to guarantee quality programming in the district. We have presented you with research showing that done well, bilingual programming is superior to English-only, that it will deliver the higher test scores that you seek if you give it more than three years to firmly take root, if you give teachers time to plan units in both languages instead of forcing them to use English-only beyond textbooks, if students' growth is looked at in English and Spanish instead of evaluating teachers only on students' English DIBELS scores, and instead of penalizing or firing them, that you listen to teachers and administrators when they state that certain initiatives are harmful to the biliteracy program. But, higher test scores are not the only reason that parents are fighting for biliteracy. Language is deeply connected to who we are as people. When you grow up and everyone you love speaks Spanish and you experience your world in both languages, and then suddenly at five or eight years old, you are told to leave an entire part of who you are at home, it does something to a child. It tells them that who they are is not valued by the school or the larger community. And so, they begin to use more and more English and slowly forget Spanish. One 5th grade teacher in the district has shared that she has several students who call home but cannot communicate with their own parents because they have lost so much Spanish by the age of 10. And I know some of you on the Board have experienced this personally. Parents are speaking out because they don't want this to happen in their families. The good news is that you already have the foundation in place to continue teaching kids in English and Spanish. Three years ago, Adams 14 spent $1.2 million to purchase materials in English and Spanish for classrooms up to the 5th grade, and many schools have enough bilingual staff to continue through the 4th grade. I have heard some Board members say that you can't find teachers to fill these positions. Let me tell you that only four years ago, in a neighboring reputable district, I watched five teachers from my school alone leave to go to Adams 14. Why? Higher pay and the excitement to be part of an innovative biliteracy program. So it's definitely possible if you make it a priority. We urge you as Board members to listen to the community and to make a commitment to support and protect biliteracy. We are asking for a formal statement from Mr. Archuleta and the Board that directs the Superintendent to do whatever is necessary to continue the biliteracy program in 4th grade as approved by the Office for Civil Rights and the Colorado Department of Education. We look forward to hearing from you. Thank you.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Ouch. Okay. Good evening, everyone. Before I start, though, I do want to read something to you.
Can you state your name, please?
Oh, Debra Figueroa. And I'll start officially, but I wanted to read this because I don't want to lose sight. Vail, Arizona, 2,000 census. As of the 2,000 census, there were approximately 484 people and 842 households, 675 families residing in this county. Here's the fact I want you to pay attention to. The racial makeup of this particular district, 87% white. White, I said white. Hispanic, 16%. This is the Vail district that we are about to copy. Hold on a minute. Commerce City. Do you know your Commerce City numbers? Commerce City numbers. Commerce City numbers, 74% are racially, racial makeup. The white percent, 3.39%. The African-American, wait, oops, I read that wrong. The Latino race, 46.8% of the population in Commerce City. Okay, just wanted to bring that up because you guys are about to adopt the Vail program that does not match our demographics at all. That's not what I actually came to speak to you about. So I'm going to get through this other presentation really fast. So, I originally came to speak to you on behalf of CTA as Equity Chair and ELL and Spanish Language Arts Educator. I stand before you to tell you my personal story as it actually relates to the oppressive decision to implement early exit transitional K3 bilingual, or pausing it, as leadership has called it. When I first came to work in the district in 2002, when there was K5 bilingual program at all elementary schools except one site, I was recruited by previous administration, no longer here, to help improve and support bilingual programming and reading prevention. Flash forward to 2009, the district implements English-only model of programming, and discontinues all bilingual instruction. Semantically, this is known as English language development. Now, understand, because I did not advocate, could not advocate for this programming, which I felt as a professional was and is still detrimental to our ELLs, I left the district. I think that's what we call here, we're going in a different direction. Here's the deal. ELD does sound better than English-only, but again, it's the same thing. Here's what I do want you to know. I was really excited in 2015 when new leadership came and the district began implementing a new biliteracy model. I had previously left the district. I was happy to apply with new qualifications, more experience, and able to return, had more licensing and more quality. So currently, I am at Kearney Middle School. Here's the disappointment. I was really excited to come here thinking about ELLs at the middle school. If you know anything about access and the test state scores, I was expecting newcomers. My first year, 6th through 8th graders, I had 142 students that had not passed the developing stage of the Language Proficiency State Exam. That's a three out of six. Today, three years later, I still have 80 students with the similar statistics. Here is some facts that I wanted you to know.
How long do you have, Debra?
Okay. I have data that I wanted you to see and the power of bilingualism and the cross-linguistic transfer. So again, timely, because I have data, and I'll send you the data I want to support. Here's my concern. It hasn't been working. It isn't working. We have kids in the program 10 years down the road still scoring fours. 10 years in the program. I have a newcomer, came two years ago, proficient, proficient 7th grader in his L1. He scored a 4.5 in two years. So I'm just saying, the proof is in the data and what the kids are doing every single day, and not in the make-believe data that I'm not sure where we're getting it from. Thank you.
Hi, Kristin Gilmore, Kearney Middle School PE teacher. I really wasn't planning on speaking tonight, so I'm just kind of going from the heart. I wanted to share some successes with you, because I do want you to know that there are some successes going on. But the main purpose, or the thing I want you to really focus on, is to not neglect after-school and before-school programs. A little bit about me is, I've been in this district for six years. This is my first job, and I absolutely love it here. I told my principal, which I'm very proud that I told her this, is that I plan to be a lifer. I'm pat... What drives my passion is all the kids and the parents that I've impacted, and all the kids that are excited to come to Kearney Middle School because I'm still here. I'm not one of the teachers that are leaving. And something outside of my class, which I'm the PE teacher, the other thing, other than teaching PE that I'm passionate about is after-school programs. So this year at Kearney, some successes I've had, thanks to the Adams 14 Education Foundation, I don't know if anyone's in here from that, but thanks to their support, I have archery going on, and that is now at Rose Hill Elementary, which is awesome because the kids can see it from Rose Hill going into Kearney. Cup stacking is another thing that through Rose Hill and myself, kids are seeing that. Which, by the way, on Saturday, I had a state, my fourth annual statewide cup stacking tournament at Adam City High School. Dan Sullivan, the PE teacher at Rose Hill, is my co-coordinator for the tournament, and it's huge. I was actually planning on sending, forwarding an email through Monica so she can send it to you. A parent from that tournament sent me the most tear-jerking letter or email. I wasn't expecting it, but she was just thanking me for everything I've put into that tournament. So that's a huge success I've had, and I'll make sure that you get it. Bring a tissue. It made me feel pretty special. Through the Adams 14 Foundation, I also have new golf equipment, not actual golf balls, they're indoor-appropriate, and badminton equipment. And so, next year, I, I think what fuels my fire to be a teacher is the constant, that feeling knowing that every day can be better. And next year, I can't wait to grow after-school programs at Kearney and growing it throughout the district. And if the district could also help recognize those teachers that are putting in all those hours, I know my principal is working hard for next year to get me paid, but everything I've done over the last six years, I've done for free because I love this district, I love the kids, and I love the potential. So expect me to be here for years and just making it better for the kids. So, oh, and one last invite tomorrow, from 4:30 to 7:00, at Kearney Middle School is my final, well, for the year, Family Archery Night. So if you would like to come see what archery at Adams, in Adams 14 would look like, Dan Sullivan at Rose Hill is following my same model. I invite anyone and everyone to come, and there will be food and refreshments. Thank you.
Virginia Valverde?
Maybe approach the bench?
Yes.
Thank you. Monica, I sent you the, you got it? The two? Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the Board, President Archuleta and Superintendent Abrego. My name is Virginia Valverde. I am a bilingual teacher at Hanson Elementary. I want to start with a quote by Bill Brady. "Leadership is unlocking people's potential to become better." We are Hanson teachers standing before you with a class-action grievance against our leadership in administration due to the unethical and unfair practice of our final evaluations. Because of the severity and because of the school year almost being over, we wanted you to be aware of the situation. We have been targeted, not only because we have spoken out against the hostile work environment in our building, but also because we are highly qualified veteran teachers. I want to show you my graph, the one that says Valverde, right there, to your right. My final rating. As you can see, when I returned in the fall of 2015, for two years, my rating stayed the same. This year, due to all the hostility and retaliation...
Can I stop you for a second?
Sure.
Because this is a class-action grievance, we can't hear that here. We need to hear, you need to go through the process, and if it gets to the Board of Education, we'll hear it at that time. We can't hear it here now.
Okay.
Okay?
That's fine.
So, I'll ask you to take this back, because we probably will be presenting it later on, but right now, we can't do it right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Am I correct, Jonathan?
The purpose of the policy is so that the Board can be fair when the time comes for them to hear any kind of a grievance or reaction that's been filed.
I could still finish?
No, you can't.
As long as it's not about the grievance, yes.
You're going to not be able to present the grievance until later?
That's true. Well, it has to do with the grievance, with all of our grievances. Okay.
Name and individuals.
One thing I'd like to say before we do leave this. We have lost two amazing teachers at Hanson. One teacher who left because she could no longer stay with no classroom support in a very challenging group of students, and one 3rd grade teacher who we lost. And it was due to the unhealthy and stressful situations that we have all encountered. So I really would like, we are asking you to please look into this. I just want to make sure you're aware of this, because we are going to go through the process.
Dr. Hyde, can I have yours? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jimmy, you may want to ask him to set up a date as ASP.
If you want to set up a date where we can hear it...
Oh, yes. Could we do that?
Yeah.
With Monica?
Yeah. Go through Monica.
Okay.
Esteemed members of the Board. My name is Caroline Paredes, and I am a 2nd grade biliteracy teacher at Rose Hill. The purpose of my speaking here tonight is to address the concern that we do not currently have the data necessary to justify the time and financial requirements needed in order to continue to implement the Biliteracy Squared framework at Adams 14. I will do so by providing data and anecdotes from my own biliteracy classroom this year. But first, some backstory. In June of 2017, I was asked if I would be willing to pilot our building's first, 2nd grade biliteracy classroom by recruiting students who had never received Spanish instruction in grades prior. I agreed, albeit with reservations. For the first 14 days, one child cried every single day due to her mere exposure to Spanish literacy. "I don't want to be in this classroom," she would yell. "This is America. School is supposed to be in English-only." Another child, after ripping his D-grade test in two, cried, "I hate Spanish. I wish I never came to this class. Who cares about Spanish?" Hearing my students voice this hateful rhetoric that they had come to internalize in only two years of public schooling was heartbreaking. Flash forward to my class now. After just one year of biliteracy programming and a culturally relevant education, my students simply cannot stop gleaming from all they have accomplished these past nine months. From the 14-day crier, "Thank you, Ms. Paredes. You taught me how to speak Spanish. You taught me how to read and write in Spanish. I can understand my mom now, and she can understand me." To the test shredder, "I wish we could do Spanish all day. Spanish is most important to me because it is the language of my family. I am proud of moving up in Spanish, most of all." As important as these children's words are, Adams 14 has made it clear that this is not the type of data it is looking for when deciding whether or not to continue biliteracy squared programming. So in addition, I present to you my numbers. This school year, every single one of my 25 students' scores rose on their DIBELS assessment and on their Spanish EDAL assessment. Thanks to their phenomenal growth in only one year's time, five of my students had read plans have been exited out. Because of their remarkable access scores, five others have been graduated from receiving ELD services. Two of my students have even been flagged as gifted and talented. On their English DIBELS test, I moved four students from red to green. Three students moved from green to blue, so they are now performing above grade level. In total, 17 of my 25 students are now performing at or above grade level, according to DIBELS. On their Spanish EDAL test, I began the year with 21 students in red. Again, they had just started their Spanish instruction with me. And now, I have only 12. These impressive English and Spanish gains were all made while receiving two hours of Spanish literacy instruction and only 50 minutes of... Spanish literacy instruction and only 50 minutes of English literacy instruction daily, all of which accomplished in only 185 days of instruction while following the bilinguacy squared framework. Just imagine what we could do with 925 days more. Thank you.
Good evening, Barb McDowell. I am speaking tonight on behalf of the Classroom Teachers Association. Good evening, President Archuleta, members of the board, Dr. Abrego. First off, I would like to thank all of you for meeting with and rescinding a number of non-renewals as passed just recently. Secondly, I wanted to share a brief history of what's been going on in this district since this year started. In August, Adam City High School teacher, Adam City High School Theater was filled with students for weeks, waiting for correct schedules. Students were also made to feel as if they were gang members by the new building administration. Adam City High School is short for its math teachers and have math classes up to 90 students. September, Rose Hill parents and staff shared with you about the discriminatory issues occurring at their school involving staff and students with special needs. After having numerous meetings with principal, director of HR, and superintendent, and mentors identified to begin working with her, Adam City High School students, staff, and parents begin to share concerns with you about the large math class sizes. October, Rose Hill parents and staff continue to share concerns with you. November, staff members at Rose Hill and Adam City High School begin looking for other jobs. Rose Hill teachers and staff continue to share concerns with you, I'm sorry, teachers and community. Monaco and Hanson begin sharing concerns about hostile work environment and discrimination of our emerging bilinguals. ELD coach transferred from Kearney to Rose Hill to help support that principal. December, concerned people continue to flood the board meeting sharing numerous concerns at Adam City High School, Rose Hill, Hanson, and Monaco, as well as advocating for bilinguacy. January and February, concerned people continue to flood the board meeting sharing numerous concerns at Adam City High School, Rose Hill, Hanson, and Monaco, as well as advocating for bilinguacy. CTA leaders and the majority of you meet to discuss some of these concerns. March, concerned people continue to flood Board of Ed meetings sharing numerous concerns about the four schools, as well as advocating for bilinguacy. April, concerned people continue to flood the Board of Ed meetings sharing numerous concerns about the four schools, as well as advocating for bilinguacy. I shared with you that 66 staff members have either left or turned in their resignation to the district, 31 of which were certified staff. May, concerned people, concerned people continue to flood the board meeting sharing numerous concerns at the four schools, as well as advocating for bilinguacy. Can Gina approach? She has some data for you about the TLCC survey, Teaching Learning Conditions Colorado. So I gathered several of the data from schools. Lastly, I want to share the results of the Teaching and Learning Conditions Colorado survey. I have created a graph of data from Colorado, Adams 14, a middle-of-the-road Adams 14 Elementary School, Rose Hill, a middle-of-the-road Adams 14 Secondary School, and Adam City High School. I have also included the questions from school leadership, teacher leadership, and overall reflection. The green that you have represents scores higher than the district. Yellow represents half the score of the district. And red represents scores that are less than half of what the district even has. As you can see, Rose Hill and Adam City High School is glaringly much lower than the district. While TLCC data is not, should not be used as a tool for criticizing a principal or group of leaders, as you can, this is not at all surprising to me, nor the people in this room, I imagine, given the history I just shared with you from August to May. So I ask you, President Archuleta and Dr. Abrego, what are you going to do to correct the culture and climate at Adam City High School and Rose Hill? Given the community's year-long frustration and angst and state data that reflects poor administration, are you going to renew these administrators' contracts? Or are you going to do the right thing for this district-
How long do you have, Barb?
-and inform them? You will be going in a different direction for effective, collaborative, respectful, and caring leadership. Come on!
Bernadette Lopez Swanger?
Good evening. My name is Bernadette Lopez Swerengen. I'm a teacher at Hanson Elementary, actually a preschool special ed teacher. I stand before you to say that you, something positive is that I belong to district accountability and I ask parents to get involved. And the person that helped work with the parents and teachers and administrators was Sheila and Jessie. And I want to say that they did a wonderful job at listening to parents and working with them, and I want them to be recognized. And it was really interesting for myself to hear the parents' concerns and what they came up with were recommendations. So I want you all to know that I really appreciated the hard work that she put into it. Thank you.
Thank you. So I just have one comment. I try and respect you as much as possible from here. Barb, this is for you. And I've asked you, we have time limits and I've asked you. And I want to hear from you and I listen to you, but please, respect other people's time also.
Just wanted to make sure you got the TLCC data.
Oh, I got it. Thank you. That concludes audience comments.
President Archuleta, may I make a comment?
Yeah.
I just want to say to the assistant principals and the principals that are in the audience, I think that you have been doing an outstanding job this year. I know that you have been put in a very difficult situation and you have all inherited underperforming schools. And I think that, I'm just going to tell you to stay true to your mission and the true data will come out when you get your report cards. And that's the data I want to see. I expect all our schools not to stay in turnaround. I told you that earlier. I expect all our schools not to be in priority improvement. I expect you to be leaders that are going to move us forward. So again, that is the data that we will be looking for and that is the data that will indicate the true abilities of your job and what you have been doing. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to move on to consent items, personnel, superintendent's recommendation, personnel actions. Can I get a motion for the consent items?
So moved.
Any discussion?
Which, which group is this?
The consent items.
All of the consent items.
Oh. I'd like to pull some, number 10, 15, 16, 17, and 19.
Under what section?
10, 15, 16, and 17, and 19.
16, 17.
From what section?
Well, that was my first question. I said it was this one section.
There's just one that went through on-
This is under personnel action administration.
Certified and administration.
School administration.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Maybe it'd be more efficient if you took up each of the three separately under the consent item?
That's renewed teachers?
Certified.
Yeah.
Classified, supported tech, and then lastly, administration.
Certified would be the first.
Certified consent. So he's doing it from the certified.
Okay, so you're pulling them from the certified-
Administration.
From administration? Okay, so let's, so let's do renewed teachers first. Let's do renewed teachers first.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
You could propose to take all of the certifies, all that are listed under certified together. I think those are numbered sequentially, correct? They start at one and just run that whole list. And if they're, unless there are pulls. So it would be proper to ask if there are any pulls for that group.
So 1 through 48 is certified. 1 through 148.
1 through 148.
Are certified. Page 30. So the beginning to right here are certified.
So that's where they start?
No.
Where they end?
That's where they end.
Okay.
One, number one is the first one.
So let's move, let's move 1 through, through 148 as a consent item. And pull number 10, 15, 16, 17, and 19. Is that your request, Dr. Hyde?
From the last list, not from the teacher list.
Those were from, Dr. Hyde was, those numbers were from the administrative list.
Okay, so let's move, let's move, let me get a motion to consent number 1 through number 148.
So moved.
Second.
Okay.
For the teachers.
So can I have roll call, Monica, please?
Mr. Archuleta?
Aye.
Dr. Hyde?
Aye.
Mrs. Quintana?
Aye.
Mr. Rola?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye. Now let's move.
Classified. It's 31.
Let's move number under classified, number 1 through-
24.
I have 10.
31 through 35.
1 through 10. 1 through 10.
No, it's page 30, it's page 33, right?
31.
31 to 32. It's 1 through 10, classified.
Okay, so classified are numbers 1 through 10. Can we move those as a consent item?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Have roll call, Monica, please?
Mr. Archuleta?
Aye.
Dr. Hyde?
Aye.
Mrs. Quintana?
Aye.
Mr. Rola?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye. Okay, now let's move under administration, number 1 through 24. And out of that 1 through 24, we will pull number 10, number 15, number 16, number 17, and number 9, 19.
I don't see that.
You don't see it on page 33?
Motion, I didn't say you're going to do it.
I am.
Yeah. But if we don't second it, then we can't move.
1 through 24. Well, 1 through 23.
Well, we have to approve 24.
All right, 1 through 24.
And pull 10.
Pull number 10, 15, 16, 17, and 19. Is that your, is that your numbers, Dr. Hyde?
Yeah, 10, 15, 16, 17, 19.
Of course, it's going to be-
10, 15, 16, 17, and 19. So can I have a motion to, to consent number 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 11, 12, 13, 14, 18, 20, 21, 22, 23, and 24? Can I get a motion? Or do we have a motion on the floor?
Don't have a motion. He wants to let you motion.
This action dies for lack of a, lack of a motion.
Correct.
So moved.
Can I get a second? It also dies for lack of a second.
Can we, can we make a motion to go into an executive session at this time? I don't know if that could-
Yeah, we can make a motion to go into executive session anytime we want to. What are we going to go under? What are we going to go into executive session under? Legal advice?
Personnel, legal advice on personnel.
So is, so-
You've noticed an executive session on legal advice today, so I can help you with that right now.
Okay. So can I get a motion to move into executive session under 24, 6, 402, parenz 4, parenz B, legal advice, board to conference with an attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Can I have roll call, Monica, please?
Mr. Archuleta?
Aye.
Dr. Hyde?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Rola?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?